States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I please have someone move the agenda to the table? Move by Tammy, second by Tracy, all those in favor? That passes seven to zero. Personnel, item 2.01. Can I please have a motion to move the staffing appointment to the table? Move by Sharita, second by Tammy, all those in favor? That passes six, seven to one. Are you abstaining?
I have an abstention.
Okay, six to, six and one abstention. Jeremy?
Good evening. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Elizabeth Zaffino on her new position as Assistant Principal of Arcadia Middle School. Liz is a proud graduate of the Greece, uh, Greath Athena High School. She attended Michigan State University where she earned a BA in English. She completed her graduate studies in special education at St. John Fisher College and earned her school building and school district administration certifications through the University of Rochester Warner School of Education. In 2006, after a few years teaching in the Midwest, Liz returned home to her roots in Greece Central where she has been an ELA teacher and ELA interventionist at Arcadia Middle School. In this role, she has been committed to leading teachers and examining student outcomes and using data to determine what each individual learner needs to ensure their continuous growth. Liz is an active member of the building and district guardians of equity teams, as well as the ELA Curriculum Review Cycle, Instructional Leadership Network, and the District Curriculum Council. She is passionate about using rigorous and engaging curriculum to ignite learning and prepare students with a solid academic and social emotional foundation that will allow them to be successful in college, careers, and as members of our community. In her new role as Assistant Principal, Liz is excited to build the capacity of Greece Central staff, especially in the areas of Tier One instructional practice. Liz and her husband, John, an Arcadia alum, have two daughters and a dog named Jetta. Liz is also a part-time coach of the Webster Blue Fin Swim Club where she focuses on the ten and under swim program. Congratulations, Liz.
Are you doing a picture? Picture time, please. Look at how they match. Item 2.02. Can I have a motion to move tenure to the table? Move by Tracy, second by Tammy. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes seven to zero. Presentation, Superintendent Grouman?
Yes, we have a team that's going to present tonight on recruitment, hiring, and retention. So I would invite Jeremy Smoline, Gina Larson, and David Blowitz is also here for that presentation. My only point that I would make as we start this is we are in a time, like many of you know, where recruitment and retention is quite a challenge. So we're, we're at a unique point in our, with our workforce, and I sincerely appreciate the work that's gone into this presentation, but really that's highlighting the work that we are really doing here in Greece. So thank you for being here.
Okay, good evening. I'm excited to share some of our updates on recruiting and retention that have taken place since my last time up here. This is a, this first slide was from our previous, my previous presentation, and I thought it was important because when it comes to effectively recruiting, hiring, and retaining diverse staff, what we have learned is that it's not a one-size-fits-all process, that to do it and to do it effectively, you do need to use data, go back and look at your current practices, and also look for targeted strategies that'll help inform our practices moving forward. So a lot of what we're going to talk about today really gets at what this slide shares here. Some of the topics that we want to cover today is we'd like to give you an update on the Hire Me Rochester that is currently taking place. Wanted to share some of our new recruiting resources that we've developed since the last time we were able to share with the board. There is an update from our Recruiting and Retention Committee where we've started our parent training for the interview process, and also some new work with state interviews, which I'll get into a little bit later. Wanted to give you an update on our staffing and hiring timeline and then talk about our next steps moving forward.
All right. So we were really excited to partner with the Sinclair Broadcast Group for a multifaceted recruitment and advertising opportunity. So the main promotional item that was part of our package was a video highlighting Greece. So it was a three-minute video that was part of the Hire Me Rochester program. The Hire Me Rochester program is a 30-minute video that airs 25 times over the course of three months. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, but in that 30 minutes, they actually highlight six companies in Rochester. Greece is one of those companies and the only school district that was included. So the company came onsite, they did the video here with us, with our staff. We had a number of staff that were highlighted in the video. They did some interviews. We got an opportunity to go into classrooms, to highlight some of our new facilities, to see people, you know, working with our students, working in their jobs. We got to highlight some, our open positions, like the actual specific open positions that we have, as well as talk about some of the great benefits in our contracts. Also included was print media and social media promotion. The print media included email blasts to the 13 WHAM email subscribers, as well as they wrote an article on their Facebook page that included content from the Hire Me Rochester video. They also did social media promotion of the video and shared it out that way as well. The information that you see there in parentheses, part of our package was that they send us data monthly. That's the data that they sent to us just a few days ago, just from December. So we should be getting some, you know, at the end of January and then at the end of February as well. We also added frontline tracking, so when people apply to the district, one of the questions that they have to answer is, "How did you hear about Greece?" So we added Hire Me Rochester as one of those questions. So we will pull that data at the end of this month as well. And then you can see we have the dates listed there. Those are the remaining opportunities for you to check it out online.
So these are some examples of the branding that we did receive through EnterGauge. One of the, one of the main pieces that we entered into an agreement with EnterGauge survey was the ability to have different branding material from a third party. Obviously, we have the ability to do that from some of our own surveys, but we felt that having a third party create this work for us with the logo was going to be an asset for us. This, some of the branding that you see here, you'll see in the next few slides with the document that Dave is going to share with all of you that will be shared for possibly new candidates or for our new hires. We also plan on using some of the branding material on our website once we get closer to the hiring season, which I'll share in the timeline at the end of the presentation. We'll have it on our website. We talked about doing almost like a social media blitz when it gets to the hiring season, which will include some of the branding that you see here and some additional that we could pull from the EnterGauge results.
Evening, everybody. Just wanted to spend a few minutes just showing you how we've kind of utilized the branding from EnterGauge, right, to help us create a tool to promote and market the Greece Central School District. So there'll be a little bit, a lot of highlights in the next few slides of just faces of people in our district, some points of pride, some of the beautiful facilities and landscapes that we have in Greece, as well as the, the branding from, from EnterGauge itself. Additionally, we also wanted to not only highlight the Greece Central School District, we also wanted to highlight the Greece community, as well as the Rochester surrounding area. I sat down with Ed Weekly a few weeks ago, and they highlighted a virtual job fair that they do where like they have a couple thousand participants and future educational talent participate in it. And as part of that data, they said 55% of those people who participate in those virtual job fairs are interested in relocation. So with that fact in mind, we also wanted to highlight again the Greece community in the Rochester area so that people not only have access to what, what's happening in the Greece Central School District, but also can see the lifestyle and culture that's happening in the surrounding area around us, and they have that access to, at their fingertips. So that's something that we really wanted to highlight. Additionally, within that work, we've partnered with WCI Realty. So Brett Waterman created a document for us to help pull from. We had a bunch of different resources around the Rochester community and the Greece community, housing, lifestyle, entertainment, and things like that that we used. The cool thing about Brett was that not only did he provide us with some great insights, he also has two kids that go to, and are in the district here. So it was cool to, to partner with a Greece resident in this work as well. And then lastly, Jeremy spoke to us a little bit, just thinking about how we're going to use this, so I'm going to dive into this document in a second. But we're thinking about creating a new recruiting tab on our website. News to you, Laurel, so something new for you to do. But highlight, with, with this brochure on there, things like our strategic plan, access to our, our job portal and things like that. Additionally, what we want to do is create a printed copy of this brochure that we can have it at recruiting events, as well as our interview process. So not only that, our, our future educational talent, not only do they have that one-on-one or face-to-face conversations with us, they have something to take with them and have us in their back of their minds as they go through their process. So we're thinking about that for our recruiting events, and then also for our onboarding, right? So when somebody comes here, they receive a position here in Greece to have access to this document as well. So we'll take the next couple of minutes just to kind of take a look at what it is. So as you go into our document, the first page, it just highlights our, our core values, who we are, what we value and believe in, and then where we wanted to head with our, our district mission, mission and vision. And that was originally from our strategic plan there. And then on the right side, you'll see, and this one is not interactive, we just took snapshots of this, but it is an interactive document. Those, those blocks in there, those color blocks, all have links to the different tabs that are located on the right-hand side of the page. So again, it's an interactive document. You can click on one thing, go to where you want to, or you can do the traditional old school and just press left or right, and you'll, you'll be able to browse through the brochure as well. And just some ideas of what some of those pages look like. So as you see here, the About Greece page, you, you see some of our students there, you see some of our facilities. We wanted to highlight what we just invested in, what our community just invested in with our athletic facilities, as well as the updates with the Performing Arts Center. And we also have, you'll see, and you'll notice, some QR codes on a bunch of the different pages. Those actually bring you to live virtual links, which are really cool. So the one on the first page is something that Mrs. Grouman and Chamber of Commerce did. I'm not sure who else was involved, so I'm, I'm sorry if I'm forgetting any names who were part of that. But it's a, a virtual tour of Greece, what the community looks like, the cool things and great things that are involved within our community. So we wanted, again, make it interactive as possible for people. This page is really cool. This, this is kind of like a summary of all our branding from, from EnterGauge, right? So again, we wanted to pull those pieces apart to show what, what our, our Greece community members, our, our staffs are thinking about our, our, our Greece community here. So if you look at the first part on the top left-hand side, that's our culture cloud, right? So those were some of the words, top words that people within our system spoke about our, our, our community here in Greece. You'll see things like the top three organizational strengths around potential open-mindedness and our staff meeting times. The three key words on the right side were some of the big words that stood out to people when they're, when they're highlighted, the Greece Central School District. And it also measured our engagement within our staff, within our Greece Central School District. And then also some additional quotes and things like that on the right-hand side from our staff members themselves. And again, that QR code there on the bottom right will, is a direct link to that Hire Me Rochester video that Jeremy and Gina were speaking about earlier. This one you didn't have in your packet. We just completed this on last Friday. So this is the next page in it, so it just highlights some of the incentives and benefits and things like that that you would get in working for the Greece Central School District, the positions that we're looking for. Again, people in our system represented in those pictures, which we think is even better. And then some QR codes directly relinked into our job sites and things like that, our application page. And then to shift, again, we, we're still, this is still a work in progress, so those culture and lifestyle tabs, we're still working on. But just to kind of highlight the, the Rochester area too, just speaking around what our, what our, what our city is about, some of the great things that we have here, some of the Greek people that were a part of this. The, the QR code links you to a virtual tour of the city of Rochester, which is a great visual for our system. And then obviously the great background right there of High Falls there down in the city. And I mean, come on, who wouldn't want to live there right now, right? And then lastly, another page that we just completed was just around like getting through Rochester, what it's like, what it looks like, you know, the 490, how, how our city's built. And then some, some awards our, our city has recently received. I don't know if you know this, we just went from number two to number one, voted the most neighborly city in the U.S. by Neighborhood.com, which I thought was pretty cool. We beat out Madison, Wisconsin from last year. So just to highlight, again, not only pulling people into the Greece Central School District, but also pulling them to the Greece and the Rochester community to show them some highlights of why it's cool to live here.
So as you remember from our presentation in the fall, we have put together a Recruitment and Retention Committee. That's where all of this work has started. We're really excited just to continue the work. As you can see, these are our members. We introduced you to them in the fall. They bring a diverse background, not only from human resources, but from around the district, and it's been really nice to have some differing perspectives around the table. It's really helped our work so far. So we're continuing to try to find innovative ways to seek out new staff, as well as retain the great staff that we already have. So as Jeremy mentioned earlier, tonight, we're just going to give you an update on the Parent Involvement and Training Group, as well as introduce you to state interviews. So the Parent Involvement and Training Group, which is Cedric Simmons, Deanna Simmons, and myself, or excuse me, sorry, not Deanna Simmons, Deanna Nix, sorry Cedric. In response to the data that PLTI shared here in the fall, we really wanted our goal to be to find ways for parents to get involved at their level, which means that maybe they're not part of a full committee, maybe they're just part of screening. So we really needed to take a look at the way that we were involving parents in the past and see if we could make ways, or find ways to differentiate how we were doing that. So the three of us sat down, we took a look at our current practices, we really anchored in on what our interview team prep looked like, and we kind of poked holes in it and started to make some changes of what will this look like when we roll it out to parents? How do we take out some of the language that only makes sense to educators and bring parents on board in a way that makes sense to them? And how can we include them in the best way that we possibly can and get them ready to join us as team members? We also, based on those meetings, we also made some changes to the screening questionnaire. And what's been really great about that is that we've already started to use that screening questionnaire in some of our current, some of our current screenings. So it's, it's been nice to have those updates already. This is still a work in progress, but we are really excited to share that we have chosen our dates for the two parent trainings. They are coming up in the beginning of March. We chose one evening and one Saturday morning, hoping to get, hopefully that will get as many parents at the table as we possibly can. The details that we are working out is trying to get childcare taken care of there. So we have some students at our high schools that are working on that as their career path, so hopefully we will have them there, as well as getting some food there as well, because food brings the people. And we will, like we said in the fall, we will partner with PLTI, as well as our buildings, to reach out to as many parents and make sure that folks really feel like they had an opportunity to join in, in those events. So we're really excited about those dates coming up.
Before I get into state interviews, I think it's important to share that we have, we've, we've always attempted or have included parents in the process. I think what we have learned through feedback and just our own observation is that a lot of times, what we've seen or even heard, was that they feel like they're outsiders looking in. Sometimes they're afraid to give feedback or ask questions because they've, they've just kind of jumped in at the start of the interview, haven't been a part of the process. So our goal is not only to include them, but I think it's to, more importantly, just really enable them and empower them to have a voice at the table so that they're not just a seat at the table, more of a voice at the table there. So they've been a part of our process, but we just don't, we just didn't, weren't getting the feedback or, like I said, our own observations, that they were a contributing member in all cases. A lot of times that was based on the relationships that they may have had. So the committee is looking just to ways that they are feeling empowered and that their, and that their voice is heard when we're making these selections moving forward. Okay, so the next piece that I wanted to share talks about state interviews. So one of the pieces, when we began this process of, as I mentioned in the beginning, having data to go back to and look at, how can we improve our processes, especially when it comes to retention, we talked a lot about exit interviews. So we began doing some research on the process and how could we make exit interviews better? And really, what we came to, what we came to find out was, they don't really give us the information that we need. It's rearview data. These are people that are leaving. They're very hard to schedule these meetings. Typically, we don't get the honest feedback that we're looking for to make the change. These are people that are already leaving. So Dave actually sent me a nice article that talked about state interviews. And since that point, we have been diving in to what these are and how can we use them effectively within our district. So what a state interview really is, it's, it's a structured discussion between a supervisor or a leader with an individual employee where that we can learn about, where the employee can learn about specific actions that leaders can take to strengthen their, the employee's engagement and retention. So these are built on retention and engagement is the purpose behind these individual, what they call state interviews. They're conducted in person, they're very clear that this is not a remote, they're not looking for a fast way to get these done, that they are face-to-face conversations. They are completely separate from performance. They're not to be performance-based, it is really again on what we can do or what that leader can do to strengthen their engagement and to keep them committed to the district. And I put down a script that this, they're scripted in a sense that they are, you just don't walk into these cold, that we have to spend time actually working with our leaders to understand the purpose. They talk a lot about active listening. We spent a lot of time with a book called Listening Leader. This brings in that leadership skill that we need to continue to develop. And it actually walks through a series of five questions that get at why somebody would want to stay, what's getting in the way, what are some obstacles that we could immediately deal with? So that's the definition of the state interview. So really, when you look at the benefits of doing this, because they do take time and that when we look to, you know, if we do look to implement this, we have to be clear on the why. And so one, these are the, the core benefits. And number one is that the employee's going to hear directly from their supervisor that he or she cares and wants them to stay in the district. Also supervisors, now the, the onus or some of the responsibility of retention and engagement falls on individual supervisors versus like human resources or a program. So there's some more shared ownership with that. Additionally, the employee themselves are more likely to accept the responsibility for staying once they build trust and what we call relational capital with their leader. So like I said before, we're just kind of dipping our toe in right now with our Recruiting and Retention Committee. And then as we learn more, we'll start looking at ways we could start bringing this out to our leaders across the district and see where there's alignment to our school improvement plans and our work that we're doing already in the district. So very excited about this opportunity. Next is, I want to just talk a little bit about the staffing timeline, because a lot of people are asking, "When can we start hiring? What are our vacancies? And when can we start looking in next year?" We have started this process, this starts, our staffing timeline starts really in December. Or as early as December, we're reviewing our district-wide staffing, our teachers on specials, on special assignment. We're asking for buildings to begin looking at their academic intervention plans for the following year, what staffing they will need for that. So that has been going on from December, and we're just about done with that process. Starting in January through March, we have building-level staff meetings. These are intense meetings for our secondary. We have three meetings with each of our secondary buildings. Their staffing is much more complicated than our elementary staffing. We do meet with the elementary, that all of our staffing is based on our student ratios and looking at our enrollment numbers. And then finally, in March, is really at the time where we could see where we have true vacancies. What we're looking at doing a little bit differently, based on just looking at our data in the past, is that typically, sometimes this process is delayed to start posting for vacancies, because we have in the past looked to see exactly where those vacancies are, vacancy, where they're going to be, which building they're going to be in. That is usually delayed because we have to go through a whole transfer process with GTA that happens like in April or May, I'm not exactly sure the date, but that when, and then when we have, go through the transfer day, we know where specific vacancies will be. What we're looking at doing is, if we know there's a vacancy, why don't we go out and interview early and do an open contract? So basically, if we're going to hire Romeo, we could say, "We've interviewed you, you're somebody that we'd want on our team, but we'll, we will not be able to tell you the location until one or two months later." We did that last year with our phys ed vacancies, because we knew we had six of them, and we wanted to get out before the other districts, and it worked effectively. We did get some feedback from building principals on how we could bring them in a little bit earlier on the process, which we're going to revamp this year. But this would be a change from the past to go into these open kind of contracts where we know they'll have the vacancy, they'll just have to agree to just find out where that vacancy is going to be within the next couple months. So again, it's an attempt to, we know that we're fighting with all the other school districts in, in the county. This is one way that we could get out and get in front of it before those people are swooped up from some smaller districts that might have that information a little bit Some of our next steps, as I mentioned before, we, we're going to continue working on our kind of formalizing the expectations and process for state interviews. One of our goals was to develop a centralized process to screen all GTA candidates, to develop a pool of vetted candidates for hiring managers, rather than asking principals to go directly to the online site and go through a laundry list. This way, they could go to a, a set of candidates that have already been vetted, that they know that they could move forward with through their building level. We're looking for a referral process so that if there's potential candidates, if somebody in the community is aware of somebody that's looking for a job within the district, to make a very streamlined, easy process for us to get the name. And then we would take that name and go through another process in-house of how we could get in touch with that person and go through a screening process possibly with them. We're looking at different recruiting incentives that will incentivize people to come to Greece that other districts are doing, aren't doing. Romeo and I are working with a company now, looking for some opportunities possibly with student loans. That's work in progress, but we're looking to be cutting-edge and to see that what we could do when maybe salaries can't get matched, but with some other incentives that would, that we could offer here in Greece that's not being done anywhere around the area that we know of. And what I said earlier in our previous presentation is really trying to monitor our staff retention, so if we are losing candidate, or losing, not candidates, but current employees, getting a better handle on why they're leaving. So we changed our separation document when people have to identify why they're leaving to be a little bit more specific, so we know if they're leaving because they're moving, are they leaving because they're changing careers, are they taking a promotion? So we've kind of fixed our, that document to have that. We, we look at that on a monthly basis, and hopefully we'll be able to look back at the end of the year and say, "Where are we losing candidates and why are we losing them?" And then again, go back to the drawing board of how we could keep them. Questions?
Sharita? Turn on your mic.
My first question, well, first of all, I want to say wonderful presentation. I think the work is great. I think that we have to be on the cutting-edge when it comes to, you know, just thinking creatively, how do we keep our workforce, how to retain the workforce and attract new, new labor, if you will. So great job, guys. Just two very simple questions, but I'll ask one and then you let me know, and I have the green light. I'm really interested in the state interviews. I think that that's great. I just wonder, how are you going to identify the candidates for those? Like, you know, because potentially, a good candidate would be someone who is thinking of leaving, right? If that's the way I'm... That's the way I'm thinking about it. So, how do you identify those folks?
So, we just purchased a book. It's a great read, a book on stay interviews. So, really, what the research says is, a stay interview, everybody has a stay interview. So, it's, you begin with the top person in, in, in an organization, in this case, it would be the superintendent, and you work your way down to cabinet. Cabinet works their way down to who they supervise, and then so on, all the way down to probably, you know, if you were to look at GTA or in buildings, to assistant principals having those interviews with the people they supervise. One thing that we looked at is, we all, you know, prior to the change in APPR, we did meet with every single person multiple times that we supervised during the course of a year. There were changes made to the APPR which stopped some of that process, which I think has led to less and less face time, in addition to more, more work to be done outside of that. So, really, when you do it, it's really taking, it's making a commitment to having at least one stay interview with everybody that you supervise to have that face-to-face comment. And then, what it says is, some people require an additional stay interview, some people don't. But the goal would be, if you do it the way they're describing it, is that every current member does have a, does have a face-to-face.
Thank you. Bill?
My question is, do we reach out to the colleges and universities, to the senior classes, to let them know that they can come and interview with us? Or if you're looking for a job, or at least a teaching job anyways, that we do have openings or we do have an active sub-list in case you can't find something right away, or anything like that?
We do. We, we actually have established relationships already with our local colleges. I know Cedric is going eventually on a, on a trip outside of the area. We feel that that would be a great opportunity to use our brochure, but we are reaching out. We do do that. In fact, we actually take it a step further. There's a lot of, I think, GASSA members and even GTA members that are currently teaching court classes in some teacher preparation programs. I know Roberts, but myself, I taught one at Roberts Wesleyan, and really, I did it for the purposes of getting in front of possible candidates and promoting Greece. So, we do do that and at all, all different ways. Thank you.
Tracy?
So, if we could go back to page, let me see other page numbers, page four. I see upcoming WHAM, Saturday, 7:30. Is that radio?
No.
Time, what is that?
Those are the TV stations, so it's 13 WHAM.
Okay.
And then, Fox Rochester.
Okay. Is there anything on the radio? Or we're not, not at this point?
That wasn't part of the package, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody? Megan?
Yes, I, on page 13, just give me a little bit more regarding the parent involvement. That's been huge the past couple of years, you know, the parental rights movement that went through. So, can you give us a little bit more on what these parents are actually being trained on? Because that could be construed in a couple of different ways of what they're being trained on. Just want to make that clear.
Sure, I can, I can speak to that. So, as Jeremy mentioned, we have had parents involved before on our, so far, it's been administrative interviews. So, what we do when we have administrative interviews is, we have a building-level team. And they come in, and prior to the interview, the team comes in, and we anchor in on the style of questions that we're going to use, the style of interview that we're going to use, what interview day will look like, what the expectations are, et cetera. And the feedback that we got from parents at the end, and they're, they're participants just like everybody else in the room. So, they might ask questions, they might not ask questions. They're going to take notes at the end, they're going to take a survey just like everybody else and be an equal participant. The feedback that they were giving us at the end is, this is great, I'm so thankful to be at the table, but it's really overwhelming. It's overwhelming coming into a room of educators where you all know what you're talking about. And I'm coming in, and I feel like kind of the outsider stepping in, and everybody else knows what's going on but me. So, you've invited me, and thank you for inviting me, but I don't really feel as welcome as you think I feel, right? So, and we were so thankful for that parent feedback. So, the, the training that we're going to do is the same training that we do prior to an interview, only we're going to step it back a few steps to go through a little more slowly. This is the style of interview that we do. So, we'll talk about behavior-based interviews and what a behavior-based interview is. That's the style of interview that we use, what that means, and all of the education pieces that we've already given to our schools and our administrative team, that, like, that's the learning that they have already come in with that our parents didn't have. So, we will go through all of that training with them. We'll go through the style of questions, we'll go through anti-bias in hiring practices and why we choose the style of questions that we do. And then, we will go through the full training, like a mock training, like we normally would on that day. So, we'll do that, so that parents that have gone through all of that, if then, they want to join a team, when they're walking in on that day, they're walking in even playing field, actually, maybe a step ahead of everybody else in the room. Does that help?
It does. I do have a follow-up, though.
Sure.
Okay. Because yes, I have obviously been in committee meetings, and it seems to be that you're sitting in a room, and you've got a committee of 30 people, and when you go around the room asking, you know, who's who and going over everything, you feel like you're the only one, you're the only parent that's not on payroll. I mean, everyone else is either working for the district, they've been, you know, in the, in the community here, but you get that one parent. Do we have a ratio of what we're looking for? I mean, if you've got 25 administrators and cabinet members in there, and you've got one parent, are we, are we going to have so many parents in there to kind of, I mean, if you're that one parent and you're like, oh my God, what am I into?
I can tell you that every committee has been a little bit different. If I think back to my first involvement, because I'm, I'm in year two of this, my first involvement, I think each of our committees had three parents. We tried to bring, so that it wasn't the lone parent all by themselves. We tried to have at least two parents in each committee. A lot of times, one of those parents was already a parent rep in one of our buildings, so they were familiar with schools, and one parent might not be. But we tried to have at least two parents at a time. But some of those committees had three. So, we don't have anything set. It might be something to look at, but we try not to have them be the lone person.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Also, just to add on that, that parents are generally at what we call round one, and generally, those are committees that are usually eight people. So, they're not a committee of where you might have seen in the past, there's 30, you know, a large number. We try to keep representation to like a GTA person, an ACT UP member, depending if it's a principal, it could be the, the principal secretary, a custodian. So, we try to have a diverse group, but we try to keep it relatively small so that, you know, two parents on there would kind of equal out the other stakeholders that are there. And it's kind of shrinking down the committees a little bit.
Mark, go ahead.
So, just, just a quick comment and then a question. I love that idea. If we're bringing parents in who are already inside, that might not bring out the full perspective that we might want by reaching further outside, maybe through PLTI or something like that. You, you've mentioned behavior-based interviews. Can you just give me a quick, what is that?
Sure. A behavior-based interview is not, it's, it's the opposite of a skill-based interview. So, a skill-based interview is, I'm going to ask you a direct question on, do you know how to build a master schedule? And if you know that answer, you're going to be able to answer it really well. But if Kathy's never built a master schedule, she's not going to be able to answer that, and she might be out. However, both of your potential for learning how to build a master schedule, excuse me, which is a fairly easy thing to teach, might be exactly the same. So, behavior-based interview will get at your ability to do those things.
Great, thank you.
Sharita?
You mentioned that you guys had partnered with WCI for some housing, like around housing resources. And I just wondered, do we do anything as far as like relocation and actually helping folks that are looking for that, okay, sorry. Helping people get settled if they do, if they show an interest or accept a job with us?
We don't. So, some of that is somewhat contractual, because it would be hard to establish who, what's that amount, who gets it, who doesn't do it. So, that's why we've looked at other opportunities, possibly, we're exploring, like I mentioned, possibly some work with possible student loans. We looked at tuition reimbursement. But when it comes to relocation, that was something that we just haven't been able to at least figure it out because of the limitations, sometimes due to contractual language.
Tammy?
I would like to echo Dr. Trewick's comments on how much work you guys have done on this, and thank you very much. I'm curious about our contracts and how things are going this year. So, we've done, the district has done tremendous amount of work on improving the contracts available for all the different types of positions available. How has that helped us in having more of a pool of applicants? And are we hearing that people are coming to our district more so because they've heard about our contracts? Or is location a big deal more so than that? How does that play into things?
Well, that's a good question. I think it depends on the contract and, and the unit that we're talking about. So, for example, GTA's contract, when it comes to possibly what people look at most, salary, that, we have one more year before we're off of stops. So, that is, that's still an obstacle that we're, we're not able to overcome for another year. So, that, that necessarily, the contract when it comes to teachers has not been what we have heard just through conversations. What we do hear from people, the interviews that, that I'm a part of when it comes to GASSA, is they hear about the work. That happens more and more and more on, at a much regular basis, and I'm being 100% honest, that when we ask the question of why Greece, what we generally hear now is, the work is aligned to their core values and, and the words out with that. Now, that's, you know, I'm a part of the most GASSA interviews. So, but I, so when it comes to the teachers, I, I don't know if the, the contracts themselves have made a difference. I think when you look at our ACT UP contracts, where you're looking at office clerks, when you're looking at our teaching assistants, when you're looking at our CCAs, our rates are now much more competitive compared to other districts. So, I do believe that that has been incentivizing people to come to work with that. Teamsters, our bus, our drivers' rates are, are high. And, and so, I do think that that has been attracting people as, as well. So, I don't think we're there yet when it comes to teachers, but I do expect that to go away once the steps are gone and we're able to look at our starting salary a little bit differently.
Okay, and one comment from me. Oh, Mark, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I know you, you mentioned at a meeting, probably a couple of months, maybe three months ago, that you were conducting a survey regarding retention and recruitment. I, I imagine there was a lot of input from that into, into all of this. Will we be, will that be shared with the board at some time in the near future? I would imagine that that's, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think I would, I think we would just have to have a clear picture on what you're, what the board would be looking for. For me personally, when we had the ENERGAGE, or not me personally, but our team, when we set out with ENERGAGE, what, what drew us to ENERGAGE survey was the resources that we had, that we'd get from that. Our goal wasn't necessarily to dive into the specifics that you might see from a perception survey that we do, which is very similar to that. That just wasn't the original intent, so that we never actually put that team together to dive into the level that you might see with some of our surveys that you see that are kind of correlated to our school improvement work that's done on, I guess I use the opposite side of the house. What I, what we wanted to, number one, we wanted access to the branding that we saw here from a third party. That was important to us. We also wanted the opportunity to, they talked about PALL surveys, which are much smaller surveys. So, once we, there's some things in place, our, our plan would be to use that service to reach out to smaller groups that don't typically get the perception surveys. So, we do that with our GTA and our ACT UP instructional mostly. We don't do that through some of our groups like a Teamsters or a GASSA. So, our hope was to try to put some work together and then use the PALLs to kind of follow up and get some feedback from that to kind of guide some of, like, for example, the stay interviews. So, I, I guess there was, there's not an initial plan that I had to, to put that data together, but we always could do that.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, do you want to, go ahead.
Just one last kind of comment question. I know on page two, we talked about recruiting, hiring, retaining diverse staff. Just want to make sure that, you know, we're not just checking the box for diverse, and we're really using the diversity on merit. We're actually employing people that are qualified and certified, hopefully, in their positions I know are down. But I guess my, my thought or my comment would be that just, I just want to make sure that we're not making, you know, somebody who is qualified just because they're not checking boxes on that diversity, that they're, that we are hiring for that.
I, I would say, and I believe this to my core, I do believe that behavior-based questions allow us to do that, because it allows any, it allows a candidate to rise based on their values, their, the skill or the, not, not just experience, but their core values, their work ethic and beliefs. Because what we say at all of our trainings is that we have the people that could give people the learning that they need coming if you're not from Greece. So, if you have the work ethic, if you have the core values and beliefs, we have the people that could give you the training that you need. What behavior-based questions do, the example that Gina gave, is that it eliminates somebody who maybe knows somebody in a committee, or that, you know, it just maybe subs on a regular basis that knows the key words to use. A behavior-based questions really level the playing field, and you see the best candidate rise through their responses that way, through the presentation. And it eliminates whatever purpose somebody may have to come on a committee, because it's, it's just done through a process where it will shine who the best candidate is through the behavior-based questions. So that we are hiring the best candidate for the position.
Perfect, thank you.
And I just want to thank you for your recruiting package. As a young Long Island student going to college in the University of Albany, when I had an opportunity to come to Greece, New York, I couldn't even find it on a map, yet alone understand what the community was like. So, I think as we're reaching out, and I, hopefully, going to colleges all over the state, that that will attract people. So, thank you.
Sharita?
Yes. So, I just wanted to, actually, Megan made a very good point, but just to expand that point, I would hope that you would have that practice across the board.
It's across the board.
So, not just, you know, checking a box just when you're looking for diverse staff, but I would never want us to have anybody's in our classroom, no matter what background they came from, just to check a box. I know we're short on staff, but we have to make sure the people that we're putting in front of our students are qualified, which I feel confident you are, but I just thought we needed to broaden that statement a little bit.
Thank you very much. Item 4.02, budget development process. Superintendent Groutmann?
I'm going to have Romeo come up and give us a budget development update. Each time from here going forward, we get some new information. There's a little bit of information that's come out from the state, so he'll give us an update in terms of the progress of the development of the budget.
Thank you. There is a lot of information here this evening. I'll cover highlights on most of it, on some of it, not all of it. But I also want, excuse myself for my voice here, my throat's a little bit sore, so I apologize for the cough and for the pitch in my voice here every once in a while. So, what we're going to look at this evening are just a variety of items on the screen, kind of do a quick review of where we've been over the last eight years. The reason for that is that after we get done with the 2324 budget, we will be at a new base level funding, and I thought it'd be a good time that before we got there, let's look back at where we've been over the last several years and see where we let's look back at where we've been over the last several years and see where we are. Quick budget update on, on process. Governor did her State of the State, a couple of highlights there. Some advocacy points from ASBO and Board of Regents, and then just review the quick timeline on what the process will look like. Looking on historical, there's about five or six slides here. Lot of information, but I'll try to highlight some key points on this. As we all know, the star of the story over the last few years has been foundation aid. And with the full implementation planned for next year, it continues to be the frontrunner, frontrunner of the movie here. There were some concerns that with CPI, and since CPI, Consumer Price Index, is part of the foundation aid formula, and CPI was so high this year that maybe they weren't going to be able to fund it. But it looks like they are going to go ahead and do it. So our foundation aid is to provide every student with a sound, basic education and the variety of variables that are in there. And what I wanted to do is just highlight kind of like where we've, we've been here. So when you look at the left side of this chart, and we started 2012, 13, prior to that in 809, 910, what came about as a result of the recession, the Great Recession, was a term that came out, the gap elimination adjustment, GEA. So what you see here from 1213, and it does go back three or four more years, you'll see some increases for 2%, excuse me. You'll see some CPI increases, which are the red line. But our funding pretty much stayed pretty flat right up until about 2016, 17. And in fact, it stayed flat because we get an increase, modest, a very small increase in foundation aid, and then they take it back to cover the gap that they had that occurred in back in 07, 08, 08, 09. Once we got out of the GEA period, which is about 2016, 17, you'll see some increases in our budget. Our foundation aid goes from 59.2 up to about 63.2. So you'll see, that's in 2021. And then you see this big jump because this is now the second year of the three-year phase. And so you see us go from 63 to 72 to 87, and we're expected to go to 103 for 2324. The state legislature still has to go ahead and approve this. And one of the concerns that's still out there is what happens after 24, 25? Once we get to our new base level, what happens there? But I wanted to show this slide to let everybody know that although we're seeing big increases, about $40 million in our foundation aid over a three-year period, it's been a long time coming and goes back probably 10 or 12 years where we've gotten very little. And CPI has been a lot higher than what our budget has been for those years as well. Also decided to take a look at our budget. Since the GEA period ended in 2016, 17, and what you're seeing here are the blue bars are our budget, the green bar is the percent change in our budget, and the red line is the CPI for that year. Okay? Since 2016, 17, when the GEA stopped, right through 2021, before we're getting all these bumps now for foundation aid, our budget increase was averaged about 1.65%, which is really not a bad increase budget to budget, given that CPI was 1.26, 2.13, 2.44, 1.81, and we're averaging about 1.6, 1.65% increase in our budget. The other note I wanted to make on this is although CPI here, you'll see several spots where CPI is lower than what our budget. One thing to keep in mind is our basket of goods and the basket of goods for CPI do not equate. So CPI looks at hotel costs, apparel costs, other items that don't apply to us. Our CPI is healthcare, retirement, contract salaries. So in those years where our budget was higher than CPI, really not much we can do because we're contractually obligated to deal with that. But in the years where we're lower than CPI, it's because we did a good job actually making sure that we cut back as much as we could to make the budget balance in that particular year. Over the six-year period before the recent increase, we've been averaging about a 2.3% increase in our budget year to year over a six or seven-year period, which is not that bad. What comes from the budget is the levy. The levy is based on the tax cap since 2012. The tax cap calculation, we review that here with the board every year. The blue bars are what our levy totals were. The red is the change in the levy for that particular year. So in 1516, our levy went up 1.78%. In 1617, it went up 1%. And you can see that in 2021, our levy went up 4.32%. But for those board members that were here at the time, that was when the Greasridge Mall came off the pilot, went back on the tax rolls and became a taxable assessed property in Greece. That's what threw it up to about 4.3%. For the eight-year period that we're looking at here with the mall included, our levy increase has been 2.1% on average. Without the mall, if you take that one year out, our levy increase has been about 1.83%. And another point to make, each year here, we have been compliant with the tax cap regulations and we've been under the tax cap maximum allowable levy. Overall, not a bad eight-year period. The other variable in the budget, or another variable is the assessed value. We don't control that, that is controlled by the town of Greece. You'll see from 1516 to about 1718, very small changes in the assessed value at the town of Greece for the district, 0.69%, half a percent, less than a quarter percent. Starting around 1819, we see some larger increases. Again, 2021, Greasridge Mall comes off of the pilot, hits the tax rolls again, and then we've seen the assessed values on, go from, again in 2122, go to 1.7% increase. In this last year, 2223, it only changed 0.84%. And if you recall, we had a couple sessions around equalization rate. And the equalization rate for the town of Greece went from 100% to 86%. And that's why this change in the levy has been small. Over the eight-year period, the levy has, or the assessed values have increased about 11% from 1516 to current. It's gone up about 16, or 11% over that period. And then the tax rate. The tax rate itself, if you recall, it's the levy that comes out of the tax cap calculation divided by the assessed value from the town of Greece. Pretty much two prescribed items for us for the most part. When the levy increase, when our levy percentage increase is higher than the assessed value increase, the tax rate will generally increase. When our levy assessment, levy value percentage is lower than the assessed value increase, the rate will come down. So you'll see here a couple of points where the levies kind of does go up and down. The high point for our levy, tax rate increase was in 1718. The tax rate went up 1.65%. On the other opposite end of that, in 2122, from 2021, the tax rate actually went down. It's a negative, just one, it's a negative 0.32%. For the eight-year average, the total average period, our tax rate average has been less than three quarters, less than three quarters of a percent. And over the eight-year period, it's gone up 4.8% over eight years, from 2369 to currently at 2484. So again, changes, variableness on the tax rate, but pretty steady and pretty conservative. And the last item I wanted to take a look at here was the three-part budget. This is a requirement that ends up in the budget book each year. We have to break the budget down into administrative capital and program components. You can see each of the respective lines here. The administrative component, just for some background, is office and other administrative costs. It includes the salaries and benefits of all certified administrators who spend more than 50% of their time on supervision. Administration also includes data processing, related supplies and materials, legal, insurance, school board expenses, and other supplies and materials. The capital line is the blue line, pretty steady. It represents and includes debt service, custodial and facility costs, renovations and utilities. In the program, which is the red line, those expenses include salaries and benefits of teachers and supervisors who spend the majority of their time teaching. Transportation costs are in there and related supplies and materials. And the point to make on this slide is over the eight-year period, it's been pretty steady. Even though the budget has grown significantly from eight years ago, the proportion of program administrative and capital portions of the budget have remained relatively the same over that eight-year period. Budget process update for the upcoming year. Just a reminder on our strategic plan goal, ignite learning, cultivate trust, and expand opportunity for all our students. We've looked at the strategic plan goals. We reviewed them in cabinet in preparation for the budget process. All the forms have been out, sent out to schools. We've received them back in the budget up, budget department and are reviewing them now. On all department and school staffing meetings are scheduled. They take place, as Jeremy, take place, as Jeremy had said, from December to about March, where we would complete that process. The initial rollover budget is in process. The governor's budget, executive budget, and state aid, as well as our rollover, will be presented to the board at the next board meeting on February 7. And then we would expect, as we do every year, the legislative budget to come out mid-March, end of March. The deadline actually is April 1, and we'll see what that looks like compared to what the governor will put out later on this month. Tax cap calculation, we're being reviewed now. We'll bring it back to the board for review, second board meeting in February. You can see what our tech, tax-based growth factor is. It's at 1.0022, which is slightly lower than it was the year before. So we've had some growth in Greece, Greece, but not as much as we did last year. The allowable growth factor, or CPI, is projected in the tax cap to be 2%. What we just recently learned is going into December, CPI was around 8%. We've just been notified that CPI to be used will be 6.5%. 6.5% for the year, therefore, in the tax cap calculation, it'll be kept at 2% as it has been in previous years. And then we're meeting on February 4 with our financial consultants to review debt service and all those other components that go into the budget for all our capital work. On January 10, Governor presented her State of the State. Just some highlights here. Looks like, here we go. Looks like two slides got reversed. Six items that were highlights of her presentation. One is the final phase in of the foundation aid with the increase of $2.7 billion, or 13% for 2324. It is a big number. Originally, that number has always been about 1.4, 1.5 billion dollars. As I mentioned earlier, there were concerns that with the CPI being 6, 7, 8% that the state wouldn't be able to afford it. But she has come out and said she will include that CPI in the formula and run the formula, which will generate $2.7 billion or 13% more for foundation aid. There, she's looking to do an expansion of pre-K opportunities with another $125 million, adding $20 million at the early college, high school, and PTEC grants. There's another $250 million foundation set aside for high-impact tutoring and reading and math specifically for grades three and eight. There's expansion of mental health services to all school-aged students. And a big one here that kind of touches base back on Jeremy's presentation from earlier, looking to amend the civil service law. The civil service law for the non-instructional type positions is archaic. They're looking to modernize that whole system by allowing for continuous recruiting, offering continuous recruitment exams online, multiple choice exams, remote proctoring, and computer-based testing centers. It, literally, some of these exams, they're, they have, right now, they are in person. You have to take the exam and you literally wait five or six months for a listing to come out when it's multiple choice, which should really come out the next day and doesn't. So it's a good thing that she's revising, looking to revamp this whole system. Governor's budget traditionally is released in mid to late January. We haven't seen it yet, but we should be seeing it soon. It'll be a draft of our first revenues for 2324. The school district state runs generally come out after that. We're waiting on that. One interesting point here, the governor, the November database run traditionally is used for the governor's executive budget as a starting point. We saw a preview of the November database run. And for Greece specifically, we've been expecting $15.5 million. It's possible, as the November database run indicates, that we could see $19.1 million increase in foundation aid rather than 15.5. Primary driver of that is that CPI portion of the foundation aid formula. We'll see where that goes. We are going to plan on both scenarios, 15, 5, and the 19, and we'll see which way it goes when the end of March comes around. Two major players for advocacy are ASBO and the Board of Regents. ASBO is the Association of School Business Officials. Just wanted to show some of the things that they're advocating for, very similar to what the governor has already put out. Full promise of foundation aid increase, fully, fully fund all the expense-based aids with no formula changes. Again, expansion of CTE programs. Number four is an interesting one, establish fully funded zero emission transportation pilots in the district. So there's been a lot of talk around the electric buses. Nobody's really sure where to go with it. Lot of questions, lot of challenges. So the proposal that ASBO is making is, why doesn't the state fund some pilots throughout the state to learn about what really needs to get done and then put the mandate on everybody and make revisions in that manner? Not a bad recommendation. Five, provide universal free meals to all students. Modernize the pre-K funding system that we currently have. The funding for pre-K, that means everybody's goal to increase pre-K. The funding is there, it's just tough to get to, and it's tough to access the funding. Two interesting points, the base allocation for UPK is $5,400 per student. Has not been updated since 2006, '07. Okay? And the other advocacy point that ASBO is making is to include transportation of pre-K students as an adable item for school district. Currently, they are not. So if we transport pre-K students, it's not adable. It's a high cost, not adable. ASBO is looking and recommending to make it an adable item. And again, similar to the governor, adopt the package of civil service reforms. ASBO is also looking to ask the state to pay out all the outstanding funds that are in the prior year queue. I think for Greece, it's probably in the 5, 6, 100,000 range, 5 or 6, 6, 700,000. That's probably still due to us. Number nine, allow duplicate state funding, transparency reporting to sunset. We do two reports every year, very detailed, ones on budget, ones on actual. Both of those are supposed to sunset in June of '23. Advocacy is to let those sunset and let districts work on some more important things than transparency reporting. Ten, align the property tax to the reality of inflation and the growing needs. So three items they're looking to do here. Make the allowable growth factor greater, the greater of 2% or CPI. Because the chance, you know, we're going to see a period of time here where inflation is not going to be at 0.5% in the near future. Allow the tax cap exemption for ELL and students with disabilities in the districts. There's There's been districts that have experienced significant growth in both groups, yet you don't see funding for those groups until the following year. But those children show up in your district this year with no funding behind it. So allow some type of exemption for those in the tax cap. And C, allow districts to recover unlevered funds into their tax-specific caps. What that means is, if you, and we've done this a number of times, we've brought it here, when you get to your maximum allowable growth, and your levy says you can go up, $2 million is the maximum. Many districts, a lot of districts, will choose to go underneath that $2 million, and you may want to say, we're only going to levy a million and a half. So you're going to go under the maximum levy by 500. There's no way to recoup that 500,000 that you did not levy in a future year. So what most districts do, 95% of them, they go to the maximum levy, even if they don't really wish to, because there's no mechanism to get those funds back or a portion of them in a future year when it's more likely that it's favorable for you to do that. That would be a key item for many districts if they could find the mechanism to allow that. And a lot of in ASBO is looking to raise the cap on our rainy day fund from 4% to 10% over a three-year period. Board of Regents, very similar. Fully fund the foundation aid. They wish to include a 3% minimum increase. There are some districts, unlike us, that have been receiving their full foundation aid for years. They've been, guess, overpaid, but they're held harmless. But yet, even if they don't, if they don't get any increase, they're still dealing with the labor shortages, the supply chain issues, and the inflation factors, just like everybody else. So Board of Regents is looking to say, you can't just give them zero. At least make it a minimum of 3% increase in your foundation aid. Board of Regents is also looking to provide a million dollars. They want the state to carve out $1 million to research the foundation aid formula, how to make the formula more equitable and responsive to changes as they incur real-time. Similar to ASBO, they want to implement the new operating aid with, for districts with increases in ELL students, as you can see here. Number four, aid in the zero emissions bus transition. Right now, most districts, every district is going to be required to have a study done on your routes, what type of power you need, all those types of things in order to have some type of a game plan. For a large district, that could be $200,000, $300,000. Currently, not adable. So the advocacy here is to make those electrification studies adable under transportation aid so that districts can do a better job in implementing any program that comes up. Number five, access, expand access and funding to CTE for all students. Some mandate relief. If it's not significant, they're asking to get rid of it. If it's not significant to the school's district's core mission. Streamline financial reporting, similar to ASBO, and then fully fund the prior year claims queue, similar to ASBO, for $300 million. And then lastly, just taking a quick look at the budget timeline. Here we are on the 17th. In February, we'll do the budget rollover and state aid analysis. We'll come back to you in the second meeting with debt service, property tax cap, bus replacement. March, we'll do another budget update, bus replacement proposition, resolution, and preliminary budget input. And then two key dates here is, April 11 will be the superintendent's recommendation, recommended budget to the Board of Education on April 11. And then, again, to meet the timeline requirements, one week later, we would ask the board to adopt the budget and a property tax report card. Budget book will be made available to the public by April 25. And official public hearing will be on May 2 with the vote on the budget and Board of Elections on May 16.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Mark?
What, I'm sorry, what page?
I had someone tell, tell me who was listening online, it was really awful when we don't turn on the mics. So, so I know nationally, there's been a really big spike in administrative costs across districts, all districts. And I also know in the nonprofit world, 80% is kind of looked at as kind of the threshold you want to be above that for program. I don't know where capital projects fit into that. I could see that's part of program, so.
It could be. Again, and capital is facilities, custodial, that's a part of the capital, which you could argue.
Right.
Could be program.
It's important to have a place to come and do school.
This is, the way this is broken out is the way the state mandates it, in terms of what expenditure categories go into which bucket. And then it's hardcoded into our Wincap system, and it's the same for all districts. So the way we do it, it's not subjective to how we wish to do it. The codes are hardcoded. And so you could make that argument, that there's some expenses in capital that could go there, and it would put us closer to the 80%.
Yeah. So my question was, so in that regard, it looks pretty good, looks good, not pretty good. But I'm wondering, how does our growth in administrative expenses look? Maybe you don't have, maybe it's something you need to get back to me on.
Possibly.
But I'm just, I'm just wondering how we look relative either to our local peers or national peers.
We could probably do that, yeah. Those are requirement, the three-part budget is a requirement to be published. So we could look at other districts in Monroe County fairly easily and compare to see where they are. They shouldn't be too difficult to go at. I will follow up with that in a future.
If it's not too difficult. It would be an interesting.
I didn't think about it, yeah. Yeah. You can do that, sure.
Anybody else? Maybe? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Romeo.
Thank you.
Okay, business action, 5.01, extracurricular activity quarterly report. Can I have a motion to move the extracurricular classroom quarterly report to the table? Moved by Megan, seconded by Tracy. All those in favor? That passes seven to zero. 5.02, quarterly reporting of professional service contracts greater than $50,000. Could I have a motion to move the quarterly reporting of the professional service contracts to the table? Moved by Tracy, seconded by Megan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor? That passes seven to zero. 5.03, updated yearly appointment. Can I have a motion to move the updated yearly appointment to the table? Moved by Bill, seconded by Tammy. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes seven to zero. Business information, 6.01, the quarterly reporting of professional service contracts exceeding $20,000 but less than $50,000. This is written information. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none. 6.02, budget status report. Again, this is written information. Does anyone have any questions? The consent agenda. Can I have a motion to move the consent agenda to the table? Moved by Sharita, seconded by Mark. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes seven to zero. I'd like to thank the Speak Well Foundation and all the other generous donors for their donations to community schools. Program action, 8.01, field trip approval. Can I have a motion to move the equity tour field trip to Washington, D.C. to the table? Motion, comments, or Tammy, Bill? Any questions on the field trip? Go ahead.
All right. Let me just get there. Okay, I see that we have an equity tour of Washington, D.C. field trip. From what I see, this is for all of the high schools, all four of them. You're looking for 132 students. It's running approximately about 68,000. Is that correct? Okay. My question is, who, the board is approving this, and I know in our policy, it states the board normally would vote this in or not for curricula, but the board would pay for that, or the budget would pay for it. Who technically is paying for that if it's a supplemental elective?
It's coming out of Title IV funds.
Title IV funds.
So there's, there's specifics in terms of what title can be used for. So us, and similar to other districts in the area, are using Title IV.
Okay.
Because it fits certain requirements that that matches.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, for clarification on that, just looking through the various policies, policies regarding field trips, and there's a lot, a lot of information in that, references, it seems to specifically say, so this is where I lost with the Title IV, you said? Title IV. It says that funding has to be raised by the groups, but is Title IV funding aimed at groups? Is that how that works?
The aim, so it has to fit under certain requirements to be able to, be able to use. So a lot of times when we're taking kids on trips, it doesn't match and fall under Title IV. So we might, kids might fundraise or do other, wait, you know, there might be other sources. But in this case, it does fit, so that's why we're able to use that.
Okay.
It depends on the trip.
I'll follow up with you on that.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Megan?
Just a quick one. Is it the practice of, most of the practice, to do out-of-town trips? Normally, what trips that we've been seeing as far as field trips, they're usually local. Is it common that we actually, I mean, this is to Washington, D.C. for two days? I'm assuming there is parameters that these kids would have to meet as far as the instructional purposes, the grades, obviously. Is there a?
So we have, we've always taken kids outside of the area, so that is not new. Boston, Washington, D.C., New York City, we've always done that. So that kind of reduced during COVID, obviously, to nothing, and then we're sort of just creeping back into out-of-town trips. But yeah, certainly, you know, just in some initial conversations that we've had, we've talked about getting kids really excited to go. We've talked about their role in that and their obligations in terms of keeping up with studies and attending school, I mean, those basic things.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mark.
Just a comment that I like the idea that you're wrapping in a few different things into there, into the trip. It's the visiting of the schools, which has a historical context. Also, the other side pieces, Arlington, the White House, and the museum. So it's, it's neat. It did strike me initially as, wow, it's a, it's a big-ticket item, but good, good content, too.
Yeah. And, and I would say, well worth it. I mean, when you look at what the kids experiences or what they will get from, from being on that trip, and we've never, while we've done traditional D.C. trips before, we've never been able to wrap in the historically black colleges into that. So we're really excited about that opportunity for the students.
Any other questions?
And some of the adults that are excited to go.
Yeah. Oh, are you going?
No, I'm not.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the field trip? That passes seven to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Bill, seconded by Tammy, all those in favor? That passes seven to zero. Have a good evening, everybody, and thank you for watching.